The House meeting is ordered to extend. Pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I'll see. Okay.
Hi, Laura. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Sotile.
Here.
Commissioner Edison.
Present.
Commissioner Serko.
Present.
Commissioner Moros.
Present.
And Commissioner Pollock-Rude.
Welcome to the Alcoa Home Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Alcoa home website. Appeals or final decisions of the planning commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk at 5:00 p.m. Friday, November 14, 2025, and must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda or an agenda item tonight, please, please fill out a request to speak card located by the secretary and give it to the secretary, who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us your name, spelling your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium as well as the other monitors in the chambers will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the chair of the commission and not to individual commissioners or to staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have not already done so. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner has received evidence related to a matter before the planning commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information at the hearing. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment except to refer it to staff for administration or place it on a future agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address a commission under public comment? Please come forward. You're the only one here. Okay. Right. Okay. We'll go to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does a commission wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No, Chair.
Okay. Does the staff wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No changes from staff.
Okay. We have a motion.
I move to adopt the minutes as recorded.
I second it. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Serko, seconded by Commissioner Sotile, please vote.
And motion carries by unanimous vote.
Very good. And now my screen is blacked out. Let's see if I can find where to go here. Oh, okay. It came up. We have new tablets. The second item is Mossi Nissan service extension. Request auto service and repair for auto dealership. It's CQ exempt and self-recommendation is to approve. Staff.
Sorry. If you could just give us one minute. We're having a few technical difficulties on the PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, you too.
It looks like the DOS prompt is looking for an IP address.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Mike Villione, senior planner with the Community Development Department. Item two on this evening's agenda is a request to amend the conditional use permit for the Mossi Nissan auto dealership. To broadly summarize, this request involves the conversion of the building at 270 North Marshall Avenue into a service and repair annex for the existing Nissan dealership. The building is 13,252 square feet and will include 15 service stations. The service annex will be staffed by seven dealership technicians and would not be open to the public. All service operations would be orchestrated through the existing dealership point of service. Routine maintenance will be the primary service offering, and therefore only vehicles -- no vehicle storage is anticipated. The building exterior will be repainted but is otherwise unchanged. Only minor site alterations are proposed and required to accommodate the use. The subject properties are shown here. The existing auto dealership is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of North Marshall Avenue and West Main Street with a primary address of 1170 West Main Street. 270 North Marshall Avenue, the building proposed to be used as a service center annex, is on the property to the adjacent north. The nearly 7,000 square foot building at the very north end, addressed as 290 North Marshall Avenue, is not a part of the request. The westerly limit of the property is bound by the MTS copper line trolley tracks and Interstate Highway 8. Uses in the vicinity include the MTS yard to the north of the proposed property and various industrial and auto-related uses across North Marshall Avenue. The properties are designated light industrial and have a consistent heavy commercial light manufacturing zoning designation. A CUP is required to operate auto service or sales uses in this zone. The existing dealership and a portion of the proposed property are also within the boundaries of the transit district specific plan and are appropriately designated industrial and commercial. The dealership operates under conditional use permit number 1048. As amended on December 16, 1991, this CUP authorizes RV service, RV accessory sales, and incidental RV sales. However, the planning commission determined on March 24, 1997, that a dealership constituted a minor change and authorized the use without formal amendment to the conditional use permit. The existing dealership site is approximately 3 acres with 30,000 square feet of building area. The dealership is full service and devotes approximately 12,000 square feet of that to service and repair uses. In accordance with zoning requirements, the subject amendment request proposes the extension of the CUP onto the 270 North Marshall Avenue property. This overall site is 1.16 acres and has access from North Marshall Avenue between the two buildings. The drive aisle at the south end of the site parking area connects to the dealership property and includes 39 parking stalls. Parking is not required according to state law, but all provided stalls shown in construction permits must comply with applicable parking dimensions in the zoning code. The vehicle service stations at 270 South Marshall will be accessible through the existing roll-up doors just south of the loading bay. Exterior alterations are limited and include a new air compressor behind the building, leveling of the loading bay, provision of a waste fluid container and enclosure, trash enclosure upgrades, and a new planter. Enclosures will be required to meet municipal code standards for covering skates and storm water specifications at building permit. North Marshall Avenue is otherwise fully improved along the project frontage. However, curb drainage outlets and adjacent sidewalk panels were determined to be damaged during review. These facilities will need to be upgraded as a part -- as a project condition. Building alterations are limited to interior tenant improvements. In addition to the 15 service stations, the floor plan also includes restrooms, a break room, and circulation and storage areas. Also clearly visible here are the compressor behind the building on the left, the leveled loading bay at the top right corner, as well as the enclosures for the trash and waste fluid. Note that zoning code conditions require all work to be conducted indoors. The proposed service annex and its incorporation into the dealership are exempt from the review requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the common sense exemption. Required findings to grant the conditional use permit can be made in the affirmative. The proposed use is consistent with general plan goals number four and nine related to the preservation of quality industrial areas and economic development. Existing operations have not resulted in code compliance activity, and project citing ensures that expanded operations will not result in incompatible noise or other nuisances. This amendment also provides an opportunity to clarify the authorized land use and include basic operational conditions typical of dealerships in the city. No public comments were received. Staff therefore recommend approval and are available for any questions, and I would note that the project architect here is here should you have questions of the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Any of you commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Yes.
Yeah, I was just -- was that the old Dale Tile building? What building was that?
Yes, it was the Tile building.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. So they're going to access that building, they're going to basically remove the fence in between and be able to access it as an open, completely open parcel?
It's already that way in the existing condition. There's no fence that separates the two properties. The code doesn't require any further action for properties to have shared access like that. If it were to develop as a separate individual property taking access over another property only, that would require other actions such as a specific plan.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
You answered my question because originally I was reading through the report and it mentioned the square footage of the building and a mezzanine to be demolished, and I wasn't sure if the demolishing was the mezzanine or the whole building, and then you explained that it's interior improvements only. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's open up a public hearing. You're the architect. Would you like to come forward?
If you need me.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the architect?
I'm involved.
No? We're okay. Good. All right. This is Fast and Furious.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. I second it. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Serko, seconded by Commissioner Sotile, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay.
All right. Well, if there's no objections, I'll make a motion to move to adopt the next resolution order approving the CQ exemption and Amendment to CUP number 1048, subject to conditions.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Moros, seconded by Commissioner Pollock-Rude, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Very good.
All right.
Sweet. Thank you.
Sure.
You bet.
Number three. Zoning code amendment. Request is to initiate zoning code amendment. It's CQ exempt and self-recommendation is approved. Staff.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for this item, staff is requesting that the planning commission adopt a resolution of intention to update the zoning code. For zoning code updates, they need to be initiated by the planning commission or by the city council. In this instance, staff is asking that the planning commission initiate, which is typically our annual zoning code update. For this year, we're looking to update some regulations related to residential building design standards as through the implementation of the code. There's a relief valve, which is an administrative zoning permit for design exceptions. So we've been seeing some issues that have been coming up with detached accessory buildings in residential zones. So like as an example, a detached garage where somebody wants to store a classic car and they don't want to have windows on the garage just because of the light intrusion onto the paint, et cetera. So we're looking to introduce some additional flexibility there for garages. We're also looking to update the emergency sleeping cabin limitations based on council direction. We're also looking to update some definitions and references in the zoning code just to increase clarity. These are just minor issues that have come up between staff and the public at the counter. So we're looking just to improve the language that's in the zoning code for those purposes. And then we are looking to update the process for the review of administrative decisions by the planning commission. In the code, it actually specifically says every six months. We've been bringing those updates to the planning commission probably about every six to nine months based on the number of decisions that were being made. We just want to clarify the current practice and update that likely to annually at a minimum. And then we're also looking to make some updates to the zoning code based on changes in state law. So we're going to leave that open-ended based on, you know, any last-minute things that come from the state this year, but we'll make some tweaks to the code based on that. So no action tonight. What we're asking you to do is to open the public hearing and then adopt the resolution and essentially endorse kind of the work program that we presented and then give any feedback if you have any concerns with anything. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Noah, you mentioned a conversion of a garage.
Mm-hmm.
Into ADU.
Mm-hmm.
You stated -- so you said if somebody wanted to store a vehicle, not to have any windows, what if it's going to be used as a living quarters?
So we still have the residential design standards for all accessory buildings. The issue that we have is that there's a minimum transparency in the residential design standards of 10% per facade. And so there's -- the process for relief is an administrative zoning permit that gets approved by the Community Development Department Director. So the director can approve that for special circumstances. We've just seen quite a few instances where people are coming forward saying that they don't want to have windows because of security or privacy or for like the example of having a classic car where they don't want the light intruding onto like the paint of the vehicle. So we just wanted to put in some sort of special exemption for that type of circumstance.
So for living quarters, fenestration is still required?
Yeah. For living quarters, they still would be required. Well, I should say would be open-ended based on what the commission would like to do, but for detached accessory buildings, we still have those residential design standards that require different finishes on the facade, you know, minimum percentage of windows, eaves and overhangs, and entry features.
Okay. What I -- fenestration, but also what I had in mind is any illegal activities going on inside the building as well.
Mm-hmm.
You didn't hear me, did you?
Sorry. Can you say it one more time? I apologize.
I was concerned about illegal activities going on inside the ADU.
Well, I mean, for a detached accessory building commonly used for storage, a lot of people like to see privacy. You know, we would respond, you know, by the police department if there's complaints or concerns about illegal activity going on. So we can take action through code compliance if there's anything that's out of the ordinary that requires investigation.
And then also setting the time, you said like a year insofar as giving a report on what administrative decisions have been made. I think that's a good idea. I don't want to leave it open-ended.
Mm-hmm.
Put a time where.
Okay. Great.
A report has to be made. Either there's none or there's some, one or the other.
Sure.
You know, do you have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Edison.
I was tracking you on all of your points, but one that was omitted was the add, the maximum display for the definition of a tobacco retailer. Is that stricken due to the city council action last week, or is that still in this?
It -- I bundled that in with improving definitions for clarity at the counter. One of the issues that we have in the tobacco retailer ordinance is that it doesn't actually give a definition on the amount of space that a tobacco retailer can display. It's basically defined in the negative. So it says a smoke shop is anything that's greater than 16 cubic feet. And so it just says for tobacco retailer, it doesn't give that spatial standard. So we're just -- we want to improve that definition by adding that 16 cubic feet to the definition for tobacco retailer.
Got it. So it's just a cleanup. Thank you.
And will these all come back to us for approval?
Yes.
Okay. Question, on the emergency sleeping cabins from six to 10, that would be on the allowed lots or, you know, in the specific places where we allow them, right? Right now we allow six. We want to bump that to 10.
Correct. So the code was changed to allow emergency sleeping cabins to go from a project that has been approved for six. After operating for a year, it could move to eight, and then operating for another year, it could move to 10. And so council has given us direction just to allow them to move from six to 10 for an already established sleeping cabin project, but no changes in the spatial standards and locations where they would be allowed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Serko.
Can we look at, review the electronic sign just for clarity? I know last time I looked at it, as far as I can tell, electronic signs are allowed wherever signs are allowed. And just want to -- I remember we used to have no motion on such signs. I don't know if we're allowing motion on those. I know that we have a lot of public schools that have motion on their signs, and we don't have the administrative purview on that. But just want to see where we are with our electronic signs.
Yes. We can take a look at electronic signs, and you're correct. So the school districts are an agency of the state, and so the city's regulations that say that electronic signs can't move don't apply to the schools. So they have the ability to display whatever they want.
Yeah. And I'd like to review that for our city and see if we can -- it's hard to compete with the public school having a full-color motion sign when you've got static images, but I want to review our policies.
Okay.
And the only other question I have is will you -- the updates to changes in state law, will you let us know what those are as far as how much more power the local authorities are losing this year or if we're gaining some back or, you know, where we might be at with that?
Yes, we will detail that in the agenda report when we bring back some draft language for the commission to consider. So we know when we bring that back for a public hearing, the commission can give us feedback. You could continue the hearing. You could ask us for more information. So just kind of wanted to leave that open-ended to see how much we could put into this upcoming update.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Looks good. Well, you have direction now.
I think we still need to move -- open the public hearing.
Yes. So if you could open the public hearing and close the public hearing and then adopt the resolution of intention, please.
Even though there's nobody here? Okay. Open public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on this agenda item? Okay. I close public hearing.
I second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Serko, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay. Public hearing is closed.
I move to adopt the next resolution order, initiate an amendment to the Alcoa home zoning code.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Moros, seconded by Commissioner Pollock-Rude, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay. I believe the next item is the calendar for next year.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Under other items for consideration, we just wanted to bring forward the calendar for planning commission meetings for 2026. So we don't need any action on that. It's just an informational item. We've already -- we've not scheduled a meeting for the first Tuesday in January, but for the remainder of the year, we didn't identify any conflicts on first and third Tuesdays for each of the month. So just an informational item.
Great. I do have a question on that. Do we have anything on the agenda for this month, the next meeting?
I don't anticipate having a meeting on November 18. The city council, because of Veterans Day, has canceled or I should say rescheduled their November 11 meeting to November 18. So I anticipate that we'll be sending out a cancellation notice this Friday or Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other staff communications?
No additional items from staff. Thank you.
Commissioner reports or communications? Okay. Well, I move to adjourn to the next meeting, if it's not canceled, to November 18, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Okay. Motion made, Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Pollock-Rude, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
Good.
All right. If I don't see you in two weeks, enjoy my favorite holiday, Thanksgiving.